Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board meeting Thursday, August 24, 2023. Time is now 7:01 PM. First item on the agenda, A and R's Orange Street, seven lots. Is there anyone here to present on behalf of the applicant?
I am the-
Good evening, this is Byron Andrews from Pre-Dedged Engineering.
And I'm Chris Bettencourt, the owner.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, uh-
Sorry, Byron?
Chris Bettencourt is looking to create seven A and R lots on the west side of Orange Street. The lots have a minimum of 90,226 square feet, which is, uh, which means their power requirement of 90,000 square feet. Uh, the minimum frontage is 202 feet.
Name an address for the record, please, and Mr. Bettencourt also.
He said it.
He did?
Yes.
He said an address?
Uh, not an address, no.
Okay. Address.
Can you hear us, Byron?
I don't think you can hear each other.
Are we muted?
Byron, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay. Oops. We just missed your name and address for the record, sir.
Uh, I'm sorry, I was a little muffled. Could you repeat the question?
Where do you live? No, just name an address. I know what engineering firm, just the address of the firm, please, and Mr. Bettencourt's name, uh, address.
Okay, uh, name the address of the engineering firm, 104 Mandus Street, Oxbridge, Mass.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Bettencourt's address, Mr. Bettencourt is, uh, his company is New Sherborne LLC. The address is 41 Mystic Valley Road, Oxbridge, Mass.
Okay, thank you very much. So can, please continue. That you, 202 feet of frontage is your, um, minimum that you have proposed.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Mr. Benoit.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, a little closer. One revision that I had asked Mr. Andrews to revise, just for clarity, was along the roadway, it was really difficult to see the edge of the dirt road versus the edge of the right-of-way, so I just asked for an extra label there because it looked like they were creating spaces. Uh, it would have been, well, might have created non-conforming lots on accident, so I just asked for a clearer label on that.
Okay.
Um, otherwise, the plan conforms with all the requirements in our subdivision regs.
Okay, and this is a dirt road?
It is, a public label.
In this portion, yeah. So did we receive any comment from fire or police for, um, suitable construction of this section of the roadway?
Nothing in the negative, uh, just conversations with Mr. Farnell.
Okay.
But, um, everyone's aware that this is maintained regularly, uh, by the town, so.
Okay. Right. Ford, anything? Any comments, questions?
Um, I don't know, maybe, just, on the therapy, they're just seeing, like, the Perry Street, very little with public right-of-way. I believe that section of Perry Street is a private way.
I don't even believe it's a way at all.
Privately owned.
That is correct.
And so in the paper, it says, "Public," it's a public right-of-way, but it's a private way.
Yeah, or, well, do we know it's a private way? Is it on the list?
It's not even that.
Of private ways? So that would be something that I would want corrected.
Yeah.
Because of future implications of that wording that we're signing off on that.
Not even know what it technically is, but I know it's not a public-
It's like an extension, right? Well, they call it-
Call that Perry Street Extension?
Yeah.
I don't know that side, I don't know if it's that side.
It is.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I may have no issues with the-
Yes.
The A and R subdivision just funding, sure, legally live.
So the application was for the group of the seven lots?
Yes.
I have no problem with that, as long as they're amended.
Yeah, how are the plans, uh, how are the my-lars, just as we see them here?
Yes.
Do it again.
The board could make a conditional vote. We just have to come in and sign them individually.
Yeah.
Uh, the first, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, no.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Lot four, a reduced frontage lot? Okay.
Uh, um, parcel 29, 289, lot four, not a buildable lot remaining.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Maybe something in the future. Um, okay, board, how do we want to proceed?
I will make a motion to approve the A and R estimated with the amendment, pending the amendment change of just the proper legal verbiage of the country.
And, and what Matt wanted back to the roadway?
Oh, that was already done.
That was already done, okay. I'll second that motion.
Mo, so, motion to endorse?
Motion to endorse with the change to Perry Street.
amended.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, have a night.
I'll give him a call. Me, I'll try to get him signed.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right.
Matt?
Yes?
Bob's here.
If you want.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go down to three additional business for one moment. Uh, 1, 2, 3, Gilboa Street request for extended work hours. Someone here for that request?
Do you need more time, Bob?
No, just show the phone. Just wanna check the mic real quick.
Thank you.
Oh, I gotta unshare my script. Good point. Oh, you already pulled it.
Can I name an address, please?
Robert Manerick, Economic Development, address 107 Cedar Street.
Yeah.
I'm here before the board tonight on behalf of CLACO, who are the developers of the cubes at Gilboa Warehouse, with two requests. One request is for an extension of a previously approved hours. I think in April, this board approved the extension of, or the, the working hours to work on a Sunday for the steel erection in the roofers.
Mm-hmm.
Because of all the rainy weather we've had, they're running about a month behind. They will need an extension to that to probably the end of, uh, September. I mean, October. I think right now it's approved to the end of September.
Mm-hmm.
They need one additional month.
Okay. Uh, board, any comments or questions? Uh, I will entertain a motion to grant the one-month extension to October 31st.
I'll say, okay.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
The second request is concrete pours.
Mm-hmm.
The pours, there's a 1.1 million square feet of building footprint.
Mm-hmm.
They're planning on, uh, 48,000 square foot pours, that's one, over one acre of concrete floors. They need to start at 3 o'clock in the morning and work until it's a 10-hour pour, and they finish at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and then they have until the afternoon to finish the pour. Right now, their working hours are from 7 to, I believe, 5, 5 or 6. They need to start at 3 o'clock for these long pours.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's 40, 48,000 square feet, probably 25 pours, they'd like to do three or four a week. So we're looking at a six-week period of four floor pours, if you will, uh, to finish this, these 26 acres of floors. The concrete trucks will not be on local streets. The bridge will be opening next week, that new bridge. They'll be coming right out of the pine, 200 feet down the road, left turn into the bridge, onto the property. As far as noise, they will be pulling into a enclosed building.
Who is going to be monitoring that, the control of that, just in case?
I don't know.
I don't think they'd get lost, but I'm just saying, you're, you're saying they will not be on local roads.
Yeah, just the Gilboa section, 200 feet.
And they're, who would they be the point person?
Uh, Tom LaMaster is the superintendent.
Okay.
This is, this is-
So in the special permit, which section is this applicable to?
Hours of operation.
Okay. And you're requesting over the six-week period?
That's if they average four, three or four a week.
Yeah.
They were, were asked, I think they're asking for 3 AM for all the floor pours. If it takes six weeks, fine, if it takes seven, it's whatever the duration of the pours. It depends on the roof now. They need a solid roof above them.
What?
If the roof is delayed, the concrete floors are delayed, so we don't want to tie ourselves to a six-week timeframe. Basically, 25 pours at 3 AM.
If I can to the chair?
Yes.
So, I understand what the board's, you know, with concrete. Um, the only stipulation I would have is, like you said, the roof gotta be done before they can pour in those areas. So that means they're taking it out through the end of October. That's when the steel is supposed to be done, you're saying?
Well, if it's a sunny day, they don't need the roof to pour before it's-
Yeah, but if they, well, we're getting out of this noise at night, so with the roof on, you don't have all those.
Right.
The decking will be on, the roofing membrane will not be.
Okay.
The decking will be complete.
Through the chair, then, just wanna make sure on terminology what we're talking about here. So you're talking about the excellent, the steel decking will be done when?
They're about-
Two-thirds done.
More than two-thirds done, so you're looking at another month. You're planning on pours in about two weeks.
So, yeah, and you're not gonna hear nothing out, building of that size.
Okay, I think an easier way would be, when's your start date? You need to notify the board for the start date, and then, then the permission?
I heard as early as next week. I don't think it's gonna happen next week.
Okay.
If I can ask a question, I'm sorry.
Yes.
There's, I don't really have a problem with the, when they're going forward, it's if they're out of that space, onto the outdoors, and there's the backup E-big in the middle of 3 AM in the morning. I mean, sometimes that thing carries, I'm not opposed, but it carries, you know, so that's a concern, that's, that's all. I mean, I know they can't turn it off, it's a DOT thing.
I believe they, they drive in and they'll be driving back to the-
They'll be coming out?
I mean, they go into the building, there's two entrances, and they've, they've sequenced the floors, so they're backing themselves like painting a floor.
But they're backing themselves when they're in the building?
Yes.
Or chasing to the building?
The building of that size, I've been in them that big?
Well, they could turn around, they could do everything.
I've been in them millions of foot, you can't see the other end of the building.
Right, right.
I mean, it's just mind-blowing.
I've signed in, I've been there.
Yeah. So, I mean, you could put 20 dump cement trucks in, they're never gonna hear boo, as long as there's metal on top.
Just gotta bring it up.
Right, I'm trying to bookend this, so you need to tell us when-
How long?
And we're gonna have a definitive grant of a 3 AM to 1.
But if you wanna be conservative, uh, I would say the month of September and October for the 3 AM pours, to give themselves.
And you wanna start at 3 to what?
3 to 10.
1 PM.
They'd be 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, that doesn't matter, it's just the early start that they want.
It's four hours outside your work, so.
Okay.
The superintendent's not here, he would answer that specific question.
So, 3 AM?
And the only other, to the chair, the only other question I have is simple, are they gonna be stacking? A lot of times, they call stacking, they'll set up 10 trucks ready to go in, parked outside ready to go in, or at 3 AM, they're, they're pouring. So that means they'll be starting and setting up earlier than 3, because you're not showing up at 3 o'clock and then pouring at 3 o'clock.
Right.
It doesn't happen.
Right.
So they're really gonna start at 2:30 to get ready to pour for 3.
Well, I heard Daphne is sending the first truck at 4, so I think they're setting up in 3.
Okay.
Okay.
See where I'm going, I was just trying to figure out how they're setting up.
Yeah, do you want two?
Yeah. Right, I mean, we're, how are we doing this here? Cause that's fine, if that's what they're planning on doing, I'm game.
And they usually pour two or three trucks at a time.
Oh, yeah.
You're just letting them rip.
Yeah. Yeah, they have laser screeds in there, yeah. They can pour as fast as they can put it down, they can screed it.
We did the same thing, well, not we, uh, this board approved the hours at the other warehouse, the Blackstone Valley Logistics, they did the same thing.
Okay, so your request would be to extend your approved hours from 3 AM to 7 AM on September 1 to October 31st.
Okay, is that Sundays too?
Good question.
They pouring seven days a week, or they just like to know?
I heard it could possibly be Sundays, but it won't be every Sunday. If they go alternate days, then it's every other Sunday.
I don't, I don't believe they're permitted for Sunday operations as it is now.
Right, so, we would do no Sundays?
I-
We would do no Sundays?
If they're happy with that?
You can come back?
I can come back.
Yeah, if not, yeah. Okay, so, um-
Indoor operations only?
Yep.
Yeah, no, no outside pours other than day pours, like, they do have a lot of concrete aprons, that's all.
That's all day pours.
That's normal, day pours. This is because of the size of the pour, it's 10 hours, they, they need to start early, and before the heat of the day sets.
All right. I work right next to Sterling, I know when they're pouring, because they bring in trucks from everywhere.
Yeah.
It's non-stop.
Yeah. One minute time, anybody?
Have there been any noise complaints to date? We've asked this question before, it's sort of rhetorical, but they-
Prior to the walls going up, there's been some site work noise, but now that the walls are up and the roof is on, we've had not one complaint of noise. And I've talked to that person on Longwood Grove.
Okay.
My office has not received any complaints.
Okay, good.
And just one other thing, this doesn't start till the bridge is open. That way, they're, they're not going through the backside, saying, oh, well, there's been a delay now. When the bridge is open, this is a go.
That was one of my conditions through the chair, that was one of my conditions for concrete pours.
So it will be open September 1?
Bridge is supposed to be open next week.
September 1?
Yes.
One week, one week from now?
Or, or the condition where, until the bridge is officially opened, then usable.
What day is August 28th? Does anybody count one?
Tuesday.
Monday.
Today's the 25th.
Monday.
What is it, Matt?
Monday.
Fourth?
It's Monday.
Today's 23rd.
Today's 24.
Today.
It's a Monday, I'm looking right at the calendar.
Everybody's going back to school.
It's Mondays, 28th.
I heard the 28th, uh, but I can't confirm that. I, I don't think the bridge will be open on the 28th, because they're doing the Jersey batteries next week on the 30th.
So why don't we do opening of bridge to October 31st?
Okay.
Cause that'll cover either end, either if it's early, a couple of days, or late.
That's all good.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, would you like me to craft a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, so we're looking at a motion to amend the hours of operation start time to 3 AM for indoor operations only, concrete pours not to commence until the bridge opens through October 31st.
And not on Sundays, very-
And not on Sundays.
Mm-hmm.
And not on Sunday.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Schultzberg, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Communicate with us if there's an issue.
If there's any change, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Have a good weekend.
I'm gonna try.
Public hearing, 7 PM, 78 Pine Street. Let's see here. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, the Town of Douglas Accessory Apartment Zoning Bylaw, Section 3.3 and 9.3, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application for Robert and Susan Lenardi regarding an accessory apartment special permit. The property location is 78 Pine Street, Accessors Map 264, parcel 28.4, Douglas, Mass. The public hearing is being held on Thursday, August 24, 2023, at 7 PM in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit www.douglas-ma.gov for the agenda and Zoom information. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. 01516. Time is now 7:21. Who's here on behalf of the applicant presenting? Come on over, name and address, please.
Susan Lenardi, 78 Pine Street, Douglas.
Okay, so, let's see, previously established, you are the new owner?
Yes, we've been there since June 21.
Oh, okay, fairly new.
Fairly new.
Okay, and your son is living in the accessory?
Yes.
Apartment, okay.
He just graduated college, it's a good place for him to learn.
Congrat, yeah, congratulations. Tough time to go to college. Okay, and you have your as-bults submitted. Mr. Benoit, any comments or questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, board, anything?
Straightforward.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this hearing? Anyone online? Not sure who the bottom one is. Seeing none? No comment, board?
No.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg, seconded by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to grant the special permit for the accessory apartment, 78 Pine Street?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Schultzberg, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
There is a draft decision prepared this evening for the board?
Great.
Just let the applicants know that it'll be available for pickup, um, after the appeal period, Jen Kucha will be in touch with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, public hearing continued, 7:23 PM, 392 Northeast Main Street LLC. Someone here on behalf of this item?
Again, the chair.
Jake Doozy, who's on, bottom guy? Who's that for?
Plan is up.
Okay, um, who would like to start?
Let me start.
Sure.
Okay, Captain, Plan Engineering.
Okay.
On behalf of the planning board.
Thank you.
Um, we've had a couple of four-round, we've submitted plans back, we've assessed those, they submitted another set for review. Um, there's a few things on this that are, we've noted, that I'm still anticipating they'll be able to resolve, but a big one is accessibility. Your bylaws are very clear, um, the site has to be accessible, handicap accessible. Um, we, I talked to, um, the applicant earlier today, I'm quite certain we can bring this set of plans to the compliance, but as of right now, they don't.
Okay.
Um, we had an objection also, or I should say, I took note that lighting was casting light on adjoining property. It turns out that there's a light on that side of the building that they feel they don't need, so eliminate that light, so that, really doesn't-
Okay.
One other issue that I've asked them to address is, in stormwater, the applicant has to do a pre and post-development hydrologic analysis to compare and show to me that they're not increasing the rate of stormwater leaving the site. Um, their application only had post-development hydrology, which is okay if they're not increasing the rate of the area of impervious. If they're reducing the impervious area, I feel it's presumptive that they're not increasing the rate of runoff. I've asked the engineer to just show me that the area of impervious has not increased on the site. The site is, as it exists right now, it's almost entirely paved.
Right.
It's almost entirely paved, so it's kind of self-evident, yeah, it's, it's kind of self-evident, but I've asked the engineer to document that, I think we need to do that.
Okay.
And we have, we have an existing note on the plan stating, it's note number four, that, that says there's 962 square feet, previously 947, there's a note on there that addresses that.
It's on sheet, uh-
To the chair? Want, want to name an address?
Oh, yeah.
Tim Callahan, Hawk Consulting, 3 Lackey Dam Road, Douglas, Madison.
Okay, thank you.
Emerson Claus Landmark Associates, 8 Charles G. Road, Hopeville.
Thank you.
So there is a note on the plan of that, note number four on sheet 1.2.
She considers progress, nice, post-construction progress.
And Peter Lewandowski is the architect of where they're standing, he's, I believe, on Zoom also, he's doing this.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay, with a minor increase to impervious, about 50%.
Um, how is it 54%?
That, that I don't get, but-
Five, 5.4%?
Yeah, you gotta read how it's worded.
Uh, you go from 926 to 976, that's not 54%.
It's a decrease too.
It's pervious.
That's pervious, not impervious, so we're, we gotta make sure it's the same value?
Right, so you're increasing 50 square feet, which is not 54% of the-
Might be 5.4.
That would be 30.
Yeah. Okay.
But we are increasing, it might be 5.4.
Right.
Which is decreasing impervious.
So does that address your concern?
It does, but, but the accessibility question is the issue. I don't know what the will of the board is, um, to be frank with you, if the board feels these plans you'd like to approve, you could prove it conditional to their resolving accessibility question.
What specifically, could you point that out, that they're lacking in their accessibility?
The plan, the slopes of the accessible part and spaces exceeds the standards. Um, the plan calls for 7% slope, 2% is the limitation.
So we're gonna change that?
Okay.
You have to re-grade it. I'm not happy with the curb ramp, again, I had a discussion with them today, they should be able to, to fix that. The location of the space is, it, they're gonna be able to make changes to make that space location suitable per standards, as it is right now. You, you either have to show me you can comply or comply.
Okay.
And that has to-
Okay.
So we strongly disagree with that. The way the CMR 521 reads, um, and I have document here, if anyone would like to see it, "Accessible parking spaces serving a particular building facility or temporary event shall be located on the shortest accessible route of travel from adjacent parking to an accessible entrance." It does not say it has to be immediately in front of the front door, so if your grades dictate something different than exactly in front of the front door, then that's what you do.
Okay.
Address that to me.
Okay.
Just tell me that. We can address it.
Okay. So as far as in the response, there, it's not addressed?
It's not addressed.
Okay, and which number is...
I did submit a response about planning today.
Oh.
To Mr. Quinn.
Okay.
It is a...
It was today?
It's a today letter. I only got the information today from them.
We were scrambling today.
Okay.
We have questions on, on InGen. I think there's nothing here that cannot be surmounted.
Okay.
It's not rocket science. We just need to see the plans brought into compliance.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I spoke with the ADA compliance officer, which is our building commissioner.
Yep.
About possibly conditioning approval to be finalized under his purview. And the plans to be submitted to us prior to the issuance of building permit. He liked the idea of being able to have the freedom to instill his ADA compliance expertise on the plan. If the applicant would be amenable to such a request. This be, you're looking at a conditional approval with, working with Ken Frazier to finalize the ADA compliance.
Ken? No, come on, Ken. That'd be fine.
I don't have a problem with that. And those are recommendations that I actually received from Mr. Quinn.
Okay.
To ask Mr. Frazier.
How much regrading will be needed to do that?
5%.
Yeah, like, the property...
No, parking area.
These changes, the parking, five inches over eight.
Yeah.
It's not a curve, it's not a curve. Okay, want to make sure it wasn't... Not trying to regrade the whole entire site.
It's actually just the, and you've got parking space.
Just one square that he's given.
That and the ramp next to it, obviously.
Ms. Sussman?
May I ask, is it reasonable to have one parking space assigned for a two-bedroom apartment?
It's all that's required now, your codes.
It just seems that they'll probably be still over, you know?
I have since redlined our bylaw for future amendment.
It was, it was when there was only a one car in a household, that's when it was red.
A horse.
Yeah, and then you had a horse.
Changes look good. I mean, they adjust what click...
Okay.
About concerns for the unloading and freight and everything else and...
Yeah, yeah, from, I missed the last meeting, but...
And it looks like you're increasing the space between the parking, which I was, again, our laws, not, remember? It was found out it was 24 allowed, but I appreciate that going to 27.8.
No, everything's looking good.
Because in reality, it is, so that's good.
I drive one of those trucks, so I get...
Do you?
Okay, board, any other comments, questions?
So what is it looking for in approval though, as amended? Or as for, how's that going to get ordered?
Well, it's going to be a conditional approval with the condition of Mr. Frazier being the final say on the compliance, on the ADA compliance. Did, are there any waiver requests that we've granted for this project?
We talked about that earlier.
There's a 15-foot offset for parking along with the east property line. We request a waiver there.
Can we just address, Mr. Marx was very concerned about this, about loading the truck on the street at all. None of that's going to be that way anymore, right?
Right, we have a loading area inside and a ramp to the back.
So they're going to back, they're going to back in and pull out.
It'll be off the street totally.
Good, well, that was, I wanted to bring that up in favor of Mr. Marx.
And the plantings?
Keep an eye too on that.
The plantings and the lawn and the snow removal storage area, do we think that they're going to survive with the snow and the salt?
Don't worry about removal.
Was there, is that for screening, or what was the ID on that, the plantings?
They're right here, the plantings. I don't object.
Arborides around the back, they'll survive.
Bitter sweet, they survive.
They survive at anything.
Okay, okay, I just don't want to, if we have a significant snow event and you're pushing everything into the fence, I don't want the fence, you know, to be, if it's six feet high or something. Do we think that that area is enough for... The average amount of snow that we get?
I mean, obviously, like most parking lots, if we have a 2015, in February, we're going to probably take a spot or two.
Okay.
It is what it is.
So the vertical, so that concrete curb, how high is that sitting?
Six inch.
Six inch.
Okay, okay.
So, through the chair, so you guys are planning on having a curb around where you put the snow?
A six inch, that's, that's the control of low end of the catch basin. So they can't do it with the truck.
Still going to get crushed. Fixing that a lot.
So you're having, through the chair, so this, you're saying they have drainage over the side of the storm?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, no.
The storm, it's...
Drainage comes down this way to catch basin, it comes this way along the curb to the catch basin, to a little spot. It's just to control the drainage going in, control it to make it go into the catch basin.
Because a lot of times they'll put a slope burn there, with a six-inch curb, I mean, I'm telling you right now, ain't going to last the first winter.
Right.
I know that for a fact. I know a lot of plaza guys are damn good, that curb is gone.
So...
You had it pitched, or a slope, something that when the plow goes up, or I don't know how, let them worry about it themselves.
They have to put the poles with the flags on it around the curb, so they know it's there and then...
But it's the snow.
Right, you put lawn there, and I mean, your intention is to plant it and then lift it over the top and drop the snow on it, and then it just melts off.
Right.
You know, but...
Right, and it's more controlled.
Right, but like he says, if it gets crushed and they push it in there, the lawn's going to get to it, you know, it's going to be for naught. I mean, it's a great thing you want to do with the lawn and all.
That's it, yep.
Yep.
Okay, so, board, did we also talk about the hours of operation for deliveries?
It shouldn't matter now, it's all off-site, off-street.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean...
But there's neighbors, right?
There's residential, but...
Beep, 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 beep.
Yeah, but you have to open until 10 o'clock in the morning, I think.
So we're, yeah, normal operation hours.
Yeah, and then, I mean, they're only open until nine, but delivery guys are done at 5 o'clock.
Yeah.
So, and he doesn't open before nine or 10, so...
I think we're trying to establish what the limitations of deliveries are for neighbors.
During normal business hours.
Yeah.
What, no later, you open until 10? But no later than, what?
We don't have a noise ordinance, so...
Yeah.
10 PM is DP.
Yeah.
I mean, what time is the, excuse me, through the chair, what time are you proposing, open in the morning?
I think you open at 10, I don't know that...
I have no problem with deliveries being at 8, you know, as early as 8 or something like that.
Right.
You know, maybe deliveries are 8 to 8 or something, 12, you know, at the max.
There's no truck there after 5 o'clock, those guys.
Right, but we'd like to write something down, I imagine.
Business hours. All right, business hours.
Okay, anything else, board?
Normal business hours, right? Home?
Right.
Anyone on...
Sorry, I apologize. And speaking about the waiver request, I'm not sure that's in the purview of this board. It's, it is a 15-foot setback for parking, but we have a site that's already paved right to the property line. If there's a pre-existing grandfathering right here for any sort of parking, that would be in the purview of the ZBA. Or at least it's only determination from the code enforcement. I just, I almost wish that they just seek a determination there. But I don't think there's an issue personally because it's a grandfathering right, but that's just my opinion. I just think we need to tackle that the right way.
I think at the previous meeting you said it would be done at this point.
I don't think we can.
Well, first, let's back up a second. What section of the bylaw are you requesting waiver from? So we note the section of the bylaw and then we can actually make a decision based on that section of our approval, which is site plan approval, so that's what we would be acting on.
There should be a note on the plan.
Yeah, the note just says a waiver is requested for the...
It's in Mr. Quinn's comments, I'll find it in a moment, or he has it.
So we would be waiving a section of site plan approval.
On the parking, parking standards.
Those parking setbacks.
And it's section 5.1. Madam Chair, I was just failing to see where the planning board has the ability to waive anything in this section.
Probably at the end of the section.
Still don't see it. Relief from any parking requirement will be authorized by the grant of a special permit from the planning board. That's it.
It's 9.4, or is it?
5.1.7.
Could you, are you in site plan approval?
I can be.
Okay, so that's what your application is subject to, our site plan approval, not the whole entire, every single section?
And waive, may upon, waive any technical requirements to section 9.4.3 and 9.4.4.
Correct, so the, the request for the waiver needs to be found in one of those sections, and the section needs to be specifically waived by a motion of this board.
All right, but they're talking setbacks, parking, which is...
That would be a totally different application. That would be an additional application after or during this one.
Through the chair?
Yes.
And it may not be in it or in it, I don't, just because the pavement is up to zero, does that mean it's so? It could have been five years ago, seven years ago, you know, creeping pavement up to, what, I don't know that I want to rely on what's there. I mean, I would rather assess it for a waiver than to allow, because it was there, to be not waived?
So...
Am I thinking wrong?
It is up to the building inspector to determine if that is grandfathered or not under our zoning. And if it is not, they can apply to, for a special permit for that section of the bylaw, which is the 5 point.
Yeah, I just didn't want to rely on the grandfathering.
We can't, we can't waive any section that's outside of our site plan approval section. So if it happens that he says that you need to request a special permit, you're coming here, not going to ZBA, which is much better, so. So I think they're just going to continue, we can't grant that waiver request.
Because we have nothing to put in there.
I think you can just continue until someone says that you need to get additional, yeah. Is that fair? Unless you have the section that I can apply the request to.
I don't.
Okay.
But I mean, obviously, we're going to have an attorney research it at this point. The previous meeting you all told us it would be done here, which is why we changed that language. We can listen to the minutes of meeting.
Well, unfortunately, I was absent.
Is it in process that Mr. Frazier is going to determine?
Yes, yes, yeah, so we have pre... Yeah, we have a pre-existing non-conforming use and condition, and the use would be of the parking spaces, so...
Okay.
We're giving them all the power on this one.
Well, he's knowledgeable, he does the job.
Yeah, I think reasonable is what the threshold should be.
You can apply with whatever Mr. Quinn needs also.
Yes, so as far as...
Section 5.1.5, that's the looking for.
Yes, yep, and that's in Mr. Quinn's comment on the number two, no further comment.
Got it.
That's why I had mentioned at the meeting that I was at, that we do not grant variances, so that word really scared me.
We changed it to a waiver.
Yeah, yeah.
We changed it to a waiver at that meeting.
Okay. Okay, so, board, do you want to discuss conditions right now, or would you like to close the public hearing?
We normally do it during public hearing, correct?
I've got a running tally of conditions right now.
We've closed them before and it hasn't worked out so well?
Well, if there's additional information, but I think that was a purposeful incident that occurred, so. But to pleasure, board?
I'm going to close them.
Okay.
Want to close it?
Okay, I'm going to ask, anyone in the audience have questions or concerns regarding this public hearing? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Preston, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, what do we have? Mr. Benoit, did you have a list also?
I've got a few.
Okay.
All right, before I get into those, we've had a historical question come up with future projects and bonding. There's some issues with some other properties. Is this the sort of project that the board would consider or wish to apply a bond to?
Yes, yes.
For what reason?
For what purpose?
What, okay, all right. First rule is, public hearing closed, sorry, my apologies. So we're going to have the board's discussion right now.
The only reason I'm bringing it up is, I'm not going to say it's going to happen here, but we've had other projects. Certain things don't get done like they say they're going to get done, and we have no recourse whatsoever. This has come up more than once, and I thought we all agreed that going forward, that something would be done about it.
Well, I think that this board approves the conditions of the actual location, the property, and it's up to the zoning enforcement officer to make sure that it meets the plans and the conditions that we set forth in our permit in order to open.
Right, but it's also been brought up, when that's not done, there's no recourse, nothing can happen.
But we are not granting a special permit, we're granting site plan approval. So our site plan approval bylaw is written in such a way that we are conditioning this approval, but if the building inspector doesn't grant the permit, building or occupancy, then nothing's happening there, so. It would be, I know what you're saying, for top coat of this parking area, but if he says he doesn't want to do it, he's the one enforcing or not enforcing our decision. And that's what it says at the end of the site plan approval. I don't, I don't understand the bonding part, I'm not sure where the justification would come in to bond a private property. That's not going to, I mean, we don't have the powers like conservation does.
I only brought it up because of FASC discussions, so...
Yeah, I understand.
I didn't think it necessarily applied in this case, but...
Does our consultant have an opinion either way?
No, I think it's a...
Doesn't, okay.
I don't know who that is. So the conditions that we've discussed so far, apart from standard conditions that we apply to all our decisions, per Mr. Quinn's recommendation was to eliminate a light on the plans that's casting onto a neighboring parcel to eliminate light pollution. Condition that the ADA or accessibility be finalized with the ADA compliance officer. And any amended plans as a result of his determination to be submitted to the board prior to the issuance of building permit. Just, it's just what I've been writing down, sorry. Deliveries to be only during business hour. Seek a determination from the zoning officer with regards to section 5.1.5.
Yeah, I would say that we don't need to seek a determination.
Okay.
I don't know about yearly check on the vertical concrete curbing because it is essential to the stormwater management, working properly. I'm just not sure how the plow trucks aren't going to damage that. I don't know how everybody else feels on the timing after, in springtime, every spring.
As far as a...
Curb check, to make sure the curb is in working order as, as designed. I don't know how else we would be able to do it if it's busted up and the water is shooting over to the neighbor's yard.
Again, to the chair, there again, I come back, how are you going to enforce that? What are you going to do? If it's not fixed, there's absolutely no, you can't do anything about it.
Well, does Mr. Frazier do yearly inspections for commercial buildings?
Nope.
Businesses?
Not typically.
For business licenses?
We can put a condition in that's general, must maintain vertical curbing and snow storage area annually.
But there again, there's no enforcement.
Right. Apart from us knowing that it's written here.
Well, let's just say the, the neighboring property starts to get flooded because there's a break in that vertical curbing. We can revert back to that and require them to fix it, or...
He does do annual inspections.
Okay, that's, Exbridge does it, that's why I...
Ken does also.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Even though the meeting's closed, make it part of the stormwater management plan.
Okay. Maintenance.
Though it's melted.
Yeah, okay. And then we also are the conditional approval that the parking area will be regraded to 2%?
In front of the accessible spaces.
Of the accessible spaces, A, B spaces. Anything else? Anybody want to add anything? No?
Sounds good.
No? Mr. Benoit?
Let's get...
Okay, does anyone want to give a try at a motion to approve the site plan approval with the conditions as previously stated by Mr. Benoit?
Previously discussed. I'll make the motion, so moved.
Motion made. Motion made by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Zwicker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for. We have one in between.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, thank you.
I guess I'm going to stick around till we.
He's got another one.
Okay. All right, that was a thank you, Board.
Good discussion.
Public hearing, zoning modifications to Douglas zoning bylaws amendment to section 6.8, residentially scaled and commercially scaled solar energy systems. Time is now 7:52. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Town and Douglas Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 29, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. For the purpose of reviewing proposals and amendments to the following Town and Douglas bylaws, adoption of new section 6.8 residentially scaled and commercially scaled solar energy systems. The complete text of the proposed zoning articles can be obtained and/or reviewed during normal business hours at the Town Clerk and the Town Douglas Planning Board, both located at 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Okay, and this was simply some verbiage that was needed to be adopted.
Yes, ma'am. As we just heard this, well, maybe our last meeting or previous pushed us towards the selectmen for their recommendation, which they gave back to us to schedule the public hearing. Just to repeat, the purpose of this is we did have our solar bylaw passed at a future town meeting. It did have to go to the Attorney General for comments and questions, or comment period, excuse me. And they did reply with a comment period after our bylaw was adopted. And they made some further recommendations and changes that we should make because of a case law that finalized right in between our town meeting and their determination. I handed it straight to Town Council, the Attorney General's letter, which was in our last packets. I don't think it's in this one.
Okay.
But all of the red lined items were recommended straight from Town Council. I have not added anything myself or anything like that. These were their recommendations. Nothing has changed since you last saw this. So this public hearing is seemingly a formality for us to collect public feedback, if any.
Very good. Board, any comments or questions? Credits?
What struck here is what was approved at the last town meeting. Yes.
Just ask you one thing.
Might as well ask everyone.
No, just a word on page one, bottom. Applicants agree to toll the quiet time periods?
That's the way he wrote it. I didn't really like it.
What's the terminal, yeah, what's the?
Toll period is a moment in time, freezing toll.
Yeah, but the way it's written out, it's kind of.
Lawyer-y?
Yeah, too much.
That's.
That's the official, the general law.
I went with the lawyer on that one, not the lawyer.
For permitting.
You can see where you read it, it's kind of, you know, it's.
We already had it, yeah, we already had it.
He's just reworded it, yeah.
Okay.
So these. The red markups or the red. Is that coming from Town Council or?
Yes, sir.
And that's actually in our favor, that portion.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It, it allows us more time.
Yeah.
The bylaw is obviously much larger. All I did is just include what the changes were. And what's before you this week.
Okay, Board, any other comments or questions?
I just want to, Mike's point, so in this decommissioning of the solar as part of this, bonding is extremely important because they could just walk away and they're gone, right?
That is part of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding these changes for our bylaw? Not seeing anyone. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Socrate, all those in favor?
Aye.
May I present the motion?
Sure.
Favorable recommendation?
Yeah, we're looking for a favorable recommendation per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, or favorable, excuse me, let me try that again. Per MGL, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Douglas Planning Board looking for a motion to recommend favorable action at fall town meeting, 2023.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Preston, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. That works.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, time is 7:57. Public hearing, second generation partners, application for earth removal special permit and site plan review. Name of applicant, second generation partners. Name of owner, second generation partners. Date and time of public hearing, Thursday, August 24 at 7:30 PM. Subject matter of the hearing, applicant is requesting an earth removal special permit from the Douglas Planning Board pursuant to the Douglas zoning bylaws, section 6.1 and 9.3, and is requesting a site plan review under section 9.4. Project description, the project involves clearing and grading for outdoor storage of construction materials. 100 Davis Street, Douglas, Mass. Assessors map 168, parcels 9, 10, 11.1. Place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit www.douglas-ma.gov for the agenda and Zoom information. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Okay, where would we like to start for the applicant? Okay, name and address.
Good evening, folks. My name's Rob Knappick from Allen Engineering, and it's a pleasure to be before you this evening on behalf of the applicant, second generation partners. And as you heard, this is an application for an earth removal special permit and a site plan approval, a site plan review. And it relates to lot one and lot two, Legacy Circle, which is on Davis Street. You may recall that a couple of years ago, the board approved a definitive subdivision called Peter Michael Business Park, and that includes the roadway known as Legacy Circle. And I think six or seven lots. There's been some activity since then. Legacy Circle has been constructed to binder course. The drainage has been installed. There's activity going on on several of the lots. McIntyre Loam and Gravel has obtained a permit from you to conduct soil processing on lot nine. There's also some activity going on on the adjoining lots three and four. What's before you is probably a pretty unique application in that it includes the construction of no building, the installation of no utilities, and not even any pavement. And the reason for that is because what the landowner, second generation partner seeks to do is to lease lot one and two to a company called Bridgewell Mats. Bridgewell Mats is in the business of renting mats used by the heavy construction industry. They're used temporarily. So Bridgewell Mats needs a facility or a site to store the mats. These are pretty heavy mats. They're constructed of timber. They're typically connected, the timbers are, by chains or cable. They're modular in nature. And the mats are used to do things like support equipment to temporarily cross a wetland. Or, for example, if there was a need to put a crane somewhere on unstable ground, matting would be placed under the crane so it wouldn't topple over. So Bridgewell's need is pretty simple. They need about two acres of relatively flat, compacted gravel. And the reason for that is because, again, they store the mats. Customers who rent these mats temporarily will pick them up on a flatbed truck. Bridgewell will load the mats onto the flatbed truck, and they'll be used and returned to the site, reused and returned to the site. The reason that they want a gravel surface is because the equipment that loads the mats onto flatbed trucks, when it makes the sort of turning movements, would tear up pavement. So they actually don't want it to be paved. So that's what the plans show. Sheet three, I think that's the existing condition, plan for orientation, Davis Street or Route 16, is running up and down the page, north, south, if you will. Running east, west is Legacy Circle. Again, that is as built as of today. It's constructed to binder course. And lots one and two together comprise about, I think, 2.2 acres or something like that. They are the first lots that you come to when you turn onto Legacy Circle from Davis Street. So the next sheet, three, is the proposed conditions. And what you see here is the grading of the site, and it's a flat surface, but it's not level. It, it is inclined to generally follow the grade of the roadway, which goes from a high point at Davis Street and a gradual slope downward as you travel along Legacy Circle. So what the, what we propose is to grade the site in such a way that stormwater runoff will run to the perimeter of the site toward the, the north, toward Legacy Circle, and then in a shallow swale down in the direction of Legacy Circle. And again, towards the southeast edge of the site along a swell and eventually collect in a sedimentation basin, which is located at that northeast corner of the site. The swales include check dams that are intended to trap any silt or sediment, and they periodically cleaned out. We've also provided for two access points. You can see them off of Legacy Circle, with the idea being that the flatbed trucks would pull in one access site, be loaded, and just make kind of a U-shaped maneuver back onto Legacy Circle. Those two access points are designed with construction entrance, large cobbles, which you've seen on many sites during construction. And those are intended to collect any sediment or mud that might be on the tires of the, of the vehicles. That is, though, one other point about the stormwater management system. That basin is designed to collect up to the 100-year storm. There is no outlet. We did submit a report. It's been reviewed by a reviewing engineer. And like the check dams and the swales, the intention is that periodically, if the need arises, any silt or sediment that collects in those basins would be removed. So that's a pretty full description of what I think is a fairly simple project. I would just note also that we did get a comment letter from your reviewing engineer.
Excellent, thank you very much. So, Board, it's a lot to digest.
May I?
Yes.
Chair? Kind of cool concept. I mean, it's, you know, business and industry. So are there any outbuildings at all? I mean, there's going to be porta johnnys there. Are there going to be a little office there, a portable office? I mean, is there?
No. In fact, so I did speak to a gentleman who currently operates where they're operating from, Bridgewell Mats, to get some understanding of their operations. And it's sort of periodic. It's not like there's a constant stream of trucks coming through within a given day. As he described it, you know, there's a need, they.
They just meet them there.
Then they meet them there, kind of a thing. So there's not a need for an office or any sort of facilities at all. It's a very kind of intermittent use.
Through the chair, so they leave some sort of machinery there on site that they just start up and they can load up these flatbeds?
Yes, the equipment is, it's a bobcat, basically, but it's sufficient to pick up, it's a modular section of matting and put it onto the truck.
You do mention that there'll be restroom facilities for employees provided in accordance. Did you? Yeah.
It should be.
Well, that's mentioned on number seven, adequacy of utilities and other public structures.
I'm sorry, where are you finding that?
Number seven in the report. It's just saying you're going to have the adequacy of utilities and other public structures. Restroom facilities for employees will be provided.
Oh, that's, that is unfortunate. That's a typo. They won't be.
Are you sure? Well, if somebody is there.
I would say when it's a construction site, this should be mandated, that there's a porta potty there.
It should be.
Well, it's, it would be with all applicable laws and regulations. So if it's not required, it's not required.
Yeah.
I mean, I've never been.
An ongoing construction site, yes.
It is.
Well, if there's a.
It's going to be there for who knows how long.
If there's a loading and unloading at eight hours a day, one person there, they've got to have a facility. So if the machinery is staying on site and he's driving around and unloading and loading up.
And none of that truck drivers coming in too.
Right.
Drivers just stop coming in.
But Goldblum said, when you got to go, you got to go.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I was asked that, so it's a good point, and I'm sorry about the typographic error. So the point arose during a, a technical review meeting, and I didn't know, that was back on 8/14, and one of the town staff raised the issue, what about facilities? At that time, I didn't know. I did ask Mr. Fleming of Bridgewell Mats, is it necessary? And he assured me that it wasn't, for what it's worth. So, you know, as I said, it's a very temporary or sporadic use. It's intermittent. I get the idea that they get a call, they meet somebody there. It might be an hour tops to load a truck once a day. There, I'm sure are days when there's no activity. Because, as you might imagine, I mean, I'm sure they'd love it if there was a constant stream of trucks coming through. But these sorts of construction mats just aren't in super high demand. So that's, that's what I'm.
Through the chair, it's not super high demand, but demand enough to do this. So I think I want it to, we all want it to be a good business. But if these people show up and, you know, there's no facility, I mean, there's going to be in and out. To have one, once a month for a couple hundred bucks, you know, I don't know. Something to think about.
So I would just leave it as required by applicable laws and regulations.
And through the chair, twofold. A lot of these projects, the first, say five, 10 feet coming in off the road, no one will have a paved, except riprap hasn't pulled out onto the road when they're pulling in and out. So no one will have a, lots of them will have a.
Be at the apron.
Paved apron.
Yeah.
The riprap you need, I know, on the site, but at the road area, no one will have it.
I thought that was shown.
They're showing riprap right to the edge of the road.
Uh.
Yeah, if you go to the last.
That's all they show, riprap.
Is the road paved?
The road is, yeah, the road has minded up.
Okay.
Paved. So instead of what, because otherwise you're pulling the stuff out onto the road.
Okay.
Period.
So we're looking for asphalt aprons. Asphalt aprons between the road. The paved.
You think is.
Roadway, yeah, paved roadway to the entrance. Right, so you've got riprap.
Right.
And that little, that little spot is going to.
Half of it or whatever. Leave the riprap you need for cleaning the tires off, but then go to pavement before you go on to the pavement.
To the right of way, perhaps?
Yes. Yeah, that's fine, okay.
And, and also through the chair. Do they, do we want them to, to spray it, you know, spray it out a little bit? Because the trucks that come in, the tractor trailers or whatever, the flatbeds, don't just turn 90 degrees.
All right.
Do they have enough angle? But I mean, there's nothing there.
Flared engines. Are there tractor trailer trucks that will be visiting this site?
That's all we.
Tractor trailer trucks?
Oh, yeah, these are, these are flat, flatbed trucks.
So we need something more comfortable for the entrance.
The turning.
Yeah.
When they come in. Yeah, exactly.
Like Ken through the chairs, we did in the beginning of that road. We open that thing up, so the trucks can swing in and out with ease. So we're not tearing everything up.
Running bushes over.
Notice already I going out on the end of the road.
Similar to that.
Yeah. The, if you see with all the utility companies in the area, that's what they're using is these mats.
Okay.
They do another pile, they take them out in a swan.
Oh, yeah, they're very useful.
All done with a load of force.
Okay, so at the two construction entrances.
Radius and paved for the first, up to the.
10 feet, maybe.
Yeah, whatever it might be there.
To the edge of the right of way.
Edge of the one, there you go. Whatever the.
Bring upon?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Does our consultant have anything to tell us?
Yes?
And I assume the letter, the plan's are good. My letter is not, doesn't, there's nothing of any great consequence. There's no terrible criticism of the work. The plans are well-executed. A lot of that's a bold stuff. There is a significant list of waivers requested.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we should. I'm not going to talk about the waivers.
Yes. Yeah, I saw that. I was making notes on that. Okay. Then you've offered your opinion on every waiver request?
Well, I, by policy, we ask the board, ask us for an opinion, we'll give it.
Okay.
We enumerated the request.
Yeah, okay.
But I haven't editorialized it.
Okay, all right. Mr. Benoit?
Yeah.
Anything to add right now?
I'd be happy to go through each of those.
Okay. Board, are we ready to review the waiver requests? And then, I see where the applicant stating, the applicant stating what the request is. I'm not getting a good sense of why, the why.
I could look through them, if you'd like.
So, yes, let's start from the top on number one.
So, looking at page two, section four of our narrative, Captain Waiver Request, and we list the waivers there. So, number one is a requirement of a bond. So, I mean, probably good to think, or useful to think of this as not the typical earth-removal special permit. It's not a gravel pit that's going to be reclaimed, and, you know, we're worried about proximity to groundwater and that sort of thing. We do need the permit because we're exporting more than 300 cubic yards within a year. And we do need, it is subject to site plan review for the amount of site that's being cleared. So, I say that as a way of saying that I think a bond, I assume a bond is typically required for your typical earth-removal permit in case the restoration doesn't occur, in case there's some damage to property. And whereas here, there's no real intent to restore it, it's not a gravel pit, we thought it was, it made some sense, or there was some basis for waiving the bond requirement.
What about the stormwater basin? The construction of the stormwater basin, and now we've added the paved aprons, keeping those in good condition. Was the stormwater basin approved with a definitive?
No.
Okay.
It wasn't. So, the way this was designed and approved is, at the time that the overall subdivision was submitted, it wasn't known what kind of uses were going to be made
Right.
Each lot. So, instead of making assumptions that were inevitably going to probably be wrong, the stormwater management system was designed for the roadway only, with the idea that at such time as each lot was developed, stormwater would be managed on each lot. And so, that's what's done here.
So, I think the work required is significant enough with the check dams and the spillways and having those appropriate, that large basin. I think there's enough here that needs to be done to require the bond. So, what would, I mean, is the applicant opposed to providing for a bond?
I don't know. They're not here with me. I think the idea was that, well, probably the assumption was that they wouldn't be able to use the site for its ultimate purpose anyway until the stormwater management system was installed and the access roads, which, if that's the case, that would seem to alleviate or eliminate the need for a bond. But I don't think they're opposed to a bond, especially because the, I mean, if the board's going to require it, they're going to require it. And the nature of the construction is that it's not as, in relative terms, super-high tech or complicated. There's not even any, you know, subsurface drainage. So, I would expect that if your engineer was asked to put a number on it, that the number would be in the tens of thousands, not in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I agree.
And I assume that's how you arrive at the bond.
Right. Yes. In case it's not constructed properly and there's erosion occurring, and we have to pull the bond to finish it ourselves.
A quick question. Looking at this, I just kind of checking it out right now. No vegetation whatsoever along Davis Street as a barrier? Reason being is, as this is just an open lot, which is fine, which is great, now you get the wind coming across and all that, like we do have a lot of open areas, there is actually nothing to stop anything going into Davis Street area.
Front setback.
I really think there should be some type of vegetation along the Davis Street line. On the Legacy Circle Road, that's one thing. That's, you're in an industrial park area. But coming on the Davis Street area, I really think it should be something there.
Well, the portion that's within the right-of-way will still be maintained. So, that tree line, it's just that front corner that's already cleared.
Right. But a tree line, there's no vegetation lower to the ground. I'm talking about arbivores, or something that would stop dirt, grit, and grime from blowing across the whole lot and get, trees are great, don't get me wrong, but they're not going to protect badly going on the Davis Street. You need something better than that, a tighter knit-type shrubbery to stop.
If I may?
Yes?
Your, the bylaw does refer to vegetation plantings. There's no planting shown. I have a comment noting that. If they're not posing any planting, they should talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I may, to your point, Madam Chair, there is, I mean, we don't show that level of detail in the plans because frankly, it can be difficult to do so. We'd almost have to locate individual trees. But if you were to go there today, you would see that there is a strip of vegetation within the portion of the right-of-way that we're obviously not, you know, altering. So, there is some vegetation. Is it a densely planted row of arbivores? No, of course not. But there is, there is, it does remain, there will remain vegetation within the right-of-way.
Well, then, through the chair, I'm going to go back, then, that's fine. Then it's densely vegetated, then you're going to have a water truck there to keep the dust out.
So
You need to, this is all tying in together, yeah?
So, we could, we could maintain a certain buffer between the property line. So, obviously, the town's not going to take down trees unless they have to. So, what would be a reasonable buffer to allow for the, to allow for the prevention of the dirt and anything coming off, on and off?
I think if vegetated the right-of-way, it makes sense to me. They could have the area they need for their operation, but putting vegetation in the right-of-way would make sense to me.
Much heavier, thicker, dense.
What right-of-way? Which right-of-way?
Both. The space between the, I'm sorry, the space between the edge of the road, like Davis Street, and, and the right-of-way itself, property.
Oh, no, we can't plant stuff in the road.
In the road.
I would, I would prefer the property line in a certain width. And Mr. Benoit had something in mind?
I just wanted to make reference that in industrial zone, there's a 50-foot front setback. Now, that's for structures usually. But we also don't know where these stacks of mats are going to be. As far as we know, they could be right at the edge of the property line. I'd be curious to know where those are, so we can determine what buffers we can stop.
Well, I think that the applicant maybe should propose a sufficient buffer of vegetation, knowing that this could be developed in the future with industrial uses. So, I don't know if the, I don't think we have any requirement for buffer zoning industrial. But it's definitely a concern to not have it clear-cut and just have a couple of trees.
It's already done.
It's already done?
Yeah.
And the idea is, is now you have a dust bowl area right on Davis.
Okay. So, I'd like to hear if the applicant would be open to proposing some vegetation plantings. So, you don't have to answer tonight.
I can't necessarily answer now.
Yeah.
To sort of flesh this out a little more, I don't, probably didn't make the point well enough, that the compacted gravel surface is just that. It's not paved, so, yeah, there could be some dust.
There will be.
But unlike, say, the adjoining site, which is, you know, they're processing material there, and it's sort of flying around, this will be flat and compacted. I think the potential for dust and that sort of whipping up of sediment is less than it would be on a typical gravel site. I understand the concern, but I'd like you to at least keep in mind that this is, this is a compacted gravel surface. I'd also like the board to consider that if the movement of, you know, silt by wind onto Davis Street is a concern, I wonder if an actual silt fence would be a better mechanism for preventing it than vegetation. I mean, it's going to take a while for vegetation to grow. Vegetation is porous. So, I would think some sort of a more physical barrier, like a silt fence, would do a better job at stopping silt from being blown onto
If I may, through the chair.
Go ahead.
So, I think the conversation that some of the board members are sort of going to is that having a buffer on the property, not, not considering what's already existing in the buffer. So, have some sort of greenery. Now, if you want to put a silt fence, which would be great, on the inside, but we can't have this, I mean, it's still visual, the streets, there, you can't just have this thing look like an open pit along, I mean, it is industrial. Is it industrial or just commercial?
Yeah. Yeah, and I'd ask where the closest residential structure is too, because we've got a mixture there, right? But it's, I'm trying to see where
If I can, through the chair.
Yes.
I work on a compacted gravel lot all day.
Get dust all day.
It's dust bowl. I live it, I work in it. So, there's many twisters, there's dirt flying across Route 56 and everything else. So, it's not an excuse.
Well, and I'm thinking, when the machine is moving around, it just
The stuff is going to fly all over the place, period.
My question would be, how high are they stacked? Do you know how high they stack those? Because could those also serve as almost a dust control mechanism?
Yes, I would say the answer is yes. They're stacked anywhere from six to eight feet tall. It's like the reach of a Bobcat. It's a Bobcat that has kind of like a fork mechanism that's been modified, and that can reach up about six to eight feet is the answer to your question.
So, a proposed location for those mats, if, if they're, if they're doing all this for site plan for that specific company, where is the company putting all of the materials on-site? That may help us in determining. I think they would have something.
Yeah. But not, if I may, not zero lot line, you know, not putting the mats to zero.
Maybe.
I don't know.
We don't know.
But visually, it could be
Yes.
Nothing that stops that, that stands right there.
Right.
The way it stands, right.
Right, but I mean, we should consider that, that's all.
Absolutely.
And I say it through the chair, the industrial park road and all that, I see no problems whatsoever with everything that's going on here. It's just trying to protect Davis Street. It's all it is. And you're doing this much kind of work?
Yeah.
I don't see a problem with a buffer, some nice stuff, something tight, and even a silt fence or something on the inside. I mean, we're not talking, we're taking 40 feet of the property, we're only talking
10.
A line of trees and a, it's just to stop debris and dirt and everything else from getting on Davis Street.
Right. And the 50-foot front setback buffer, zoning setback, is going to prevent them from constructing anything within that anyway?
Yeah, that's something along wherever they're going to be working.
Right, so it would not have to be torn up or anything, right?
Yes, yeah.
One of the waivers they requested is a waiver to permit the earth removal in place right up to the property, right up to the area.
Right. So, maybe we can move on from the vegetation and, so, just in case, if we want to be here all night, we can. But I don't know if I want to be. So, typically, if you're going to be getting that close, you would request permission from the Board of Selectmen. So, they would, they're the road commissioners. So, we would get a letter from the selectmen authorizing the closeness.
And that's what must be done here, you're saying? You're requiring a letter from the board?
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, but that's, historically, we've requested the input of the road commissioners on that waiver request. And sometimes we've given 50 feet, sometimes we've given zero feet, sometimes 100.
Which ones are that?
So, I'm not sure, you know, taking into consideration, there's no vegetated buffer, there's no real plant, like, since it's movable, right, there's no actual structure, we don't really know what that's going to visually look like approving that waiver. And then, moving on to the groundwater excavation.
So, there's a table or summary there of the recent testing that were done, it's up in the corner of that sheet.
No.
We refer to it. We did observe and found no groundwater to a depth of about 10 feet. But in an excess of caution, we're assuming the groundwater is there, and the bottom of the stormwater basin could be within about a few feet of that elevation. So, that's why we're requesting the waiver. There's no question, so the test pits are in the stormwater basin here and here, and there's no question that the groundwater elevation, even if it was an inch below the depth of the pit, would be more than sufficient on the site. But again, in an excess of caution, we're requesting the waiver because, you know, the stormwater basin is to be excavated, and we didn't dig down in the test pit, that excavation plus another 10 feet to get to groundwater, if it even exists. So, that's why we're requesting the waiver. That make sense?
I'm going to need a little more clarification. So, the stormwater basin, so why, why do you, why are you requiring, if you've already, you haven't found groundwater?
We haven't found groundwater.
Yeah.
We excavated to a depth of 122 inches, 120, 180, in test pit three, 10 feet. And when we did that excavation, we did it at the surface now, where the groundwater, where the, where the stormwater basin will go. So, we're able to dig down 10 feet with the equipment we had. However, the stormwater basin is going to be excavated to a depth of about
Seven feet.
Almost eight feet or so below the existing grade. So, we can't say definitively, you know, 10 feet or less, there's no groundwater.
Right. So, typically, we have an auger. We auger down and get, get that elevation.
If I may, just because, I mean, so, you're, so what elevation did you go down to, you say 102 inches? You have certain elevation mark?
They just used a backhoe, right? An excavator.
What is that mark?
455.
And what is the elevation of the bottom of your basin?
455 minus 10, 445. The elevation of the bottom of the basin is 450.
So, there's about five feet or so.
And then another 10.
Right.
In a worst-case scenario.
Not, I mean, because you were taking it from up here.
Exactly.
Digging down 10 feet, but now you're going to be here, and then down.
They still have to maintain, improve their, they have their 10-foot separation from groundwater unless they can.
You might want to keep going, see if you get some more water, you know, figure it out.
The fact of the matter is, even if we are within 10 feet, it'll only be in that area.
In the swale area?
Yeah. Is the swale what?
In the swale, in the stormwater basin?
Yes, correct.
So, does that actually come into consideration on the permit, because it's accessory to the earth-removal operation?
I assume so. I mean, it's part of the project, so, are you asking whether it's within
Well, it's necessary for the earth removal.
I mean, I don't know of any specific requirement in your earth-removal bylaw that says, you know, "How shall manage stormwater?" Probably there, but of course, we're going to, because it's
Is the stormwater basin, is that over 300 cubic feet of fill removed out of that section? Yeah? Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I just don't know as far as the operation, so we're granting the operation, you have to maintain your 10-foot, but then the operation requires stormwater. I'm just not sure the stormwater is subject to the same requirements as earth removal.
And that kind of confusion, if that's the right word for it, is what, you know, affects us when we're looking at how this unique project fits into the earth removal bylaw. The only reason it does is because more than 300 cubic yards, which is not much.
Yeah.
Is going off within a year.
Oh, yeah. I, yeah, I don't know.
Because you almost think if they presented just an earth removal project, they'd be fine.
Mm-hmm.
But they're also presenting the stormwater as part of the site plan, so.
And the whole thing, yeah.
Seek out clarification.
It's almost like if there's two separate plans, it wouldn't be needed.
True.
Yeah.
If they're, yeah.
Like, here's the earth removal plan to level land.
And your section of earth removal is, yeah.
If I may, the chair, you know, the earth removal bylaw contemplates like mining, like gravel mining operation. What they're doing here is site development work that happens to move enough volume of material that it's, it's a further subject.
In sedentary.
But it's a little, it is, but it's a little bit different in that the only place where he's coming within that 10 feet is within the stormwater basin.
Right, so I would be more inclined to not grant the waiver, but condition that the stormwater basin is allowed to be within the four feet, the bottom of the basin. Does that make sense?
He doesn't know if there's water.
There's no.
I haven't dug down.
What?
They don't know if there's water there. There might be nothing there.
Most likely.
So, see, it's.
I mean, if you had an auger, you could go.
Right, and in other words, it's almost like we should request to have an auger so you know. It eliminates all.
Right, they were limited by the back.
The auger of one pit, then you know.
Yeah. I think the earth removal, the section of earth removal is no, is going to maintain the 10-foot separation. I think that's how you would think of it.
And base it separately.
Yes. Okay. But we can get clarification from town council. I know that they've studied our earth removal bylaw many times, so trying to tweak it.
Next one is the top and subsoil, requiring that it be stockpiled and then used to seed and loam. Again, you know, as Mr. Quinn points out, this is more difficult to a gravel mining operation, this isn't that. But we will be using some of the stockpile, some of the topsoil to stabilize slopes and the like. So we're requesting a waiver that all of this topsoil be stockpiled.
And if the use ceases, it will need to be restored.
That's where the bond. That's where the bond would play.
Okay, so that would be seven and one, right? 6.7 and 7.1?
Yeah, the next one, number five. Again, this seems to contemplate that if you're going to excavate or conduct mining activity as it was described, that it would be sort of this rolling sort of process where you excavate an area, restore, and move on to the next area. For obvious reasons, this isn't that, so we're asking that the board waive that requirement that there be this restoration of parts of the site.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the total area of the non-restored area? Is that the 2.6?
The total area is about.
That that'll be permanently left open and unrestored?
Well, it's the majority of the site, but for a strip along Davis Street, which probably won't be touched, but it's about two acres.
Okay, permit is 2.6, but that sounds about right, okay.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Nothing, the permit, it says 2.6, I thought that would be the.
Uh, yes, that's right. So it's 1.6 and 2, 2.61, yes. Lot one is 1.6, lot two is one acre, so 2.6 is the total acreage. The MAC company only needs about two acres, but we're proposing to just, you know, work the site because a portion of it will be given over to the sediment basin and so forth, so.
Do you have on your plans the surface, what would entail, so that your finished surface?
No.
You said compacted.
Created by your engineers, so we'll modify the plan to.
Okay, so compacted gravel?
Correct.
And any dust control? Do you have a dust control? Did you submit one for dust control? Okay, I think that's also in the site plan review. So I'd like to see the surface, what the finished surface would be, and then we've got cease in operations, then within a certain amount of time, it's going to be restored. Okay. And then number six, so you've got your request for loam and seed, tree shrub planting. I'm thinking we may modify that waiver to maybe just the loam and seeding. You can propose something to us for a vegetated buffer in the future, board? Does that sound good? We won't require the loam and seeding unless there's restoration for the ceasing of the use of the property, but.
So just, so I'm clear, when you say in the future, I don't think my client knows, you know, what the long-term use is, but I think we can all agree that it's unlikely that this property will be forever used for outdoor storage of mats. I think more likely than not, the need will arise for some sort of more permanent structure or like. And of course, at that time, whatever is proposed, whether it's a building and parking and that sort of thing, that will be subject to a special permit and site plan review as well, so.
I think worst-case scenario, it's vacant and stuff starts moving around and is a dust bowl. That would be my only concern, that they would move out, and then there would be a significant period of time that nothing occurred there, so we needed something to have a game plan.
The town's been burnt many a times like that, where there's been pits or areas leveled out, and then everybody just walks away, and now you have a big hole in the ground or a big gravel area that's destroying up mud and debris, and that's why we always say the requirement is loam and seeded.
Mm-hmm, yep. And outdoor lighting.
Loam and seeding, if the use ever ceases, for example? Is that what you're getting at? If this use ever ceases, loam and seeding?
The use of the property. For a significant period of time, I would say six months or a year.
Yeah, one company moves out, we don't even loam and seed if someone's coming in.
Right. Using, yeah, yeah. And I think there could be a request by the owner saying, okay, I've got a, I've got somebody coming in, and the communication.
Can I ask you, the chair, how's that enforceable? They could say, hey, we're out here next week, and that's it, just walk away, and not loam and seeded. Or how, how can that be handled, that done through bond?
Well, we would, yeah, we would request it. We did it up in remediation. That's what we did. So we can request the owner to comply, and if not, we'd have to move forward with whatever we had from them.
We're all on the same page.
Okay, outdoor lighting, going to add that as a request, waiver request?
Yes, that's right. There is no intention to use the site by the tenant other than during daylight hours.
Okay, good. We can put that in the permit. Landscaping plan.
I think we addressed that.
Yeah, we may need to, well, if you didn't supply one, so our consultant is saying you would have to ask for a waiver, but I'm thinking you might want to do a little sketch of for our landscaping plan. So you wouldn't need to request that. And small, blurb on time requirements and cost of improvements.
We'll provide that.
Okay. No commercial sign?
There is no intention to erect a sign, they don't need it, the tenant doesn't need it.
Okay. And you can add the signs for the trucks entering?
So you issued a earthwork removal special permit for lot six. I forget when, and I'm not, you probably forget too, it was a while ago, I'll throw it down.
This is for MacIntyre.
In July of 2022. Lot six is at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
And in that special permit, you required trucks entering signs be placed on Davis 250, and I believe they're there. I was going to drive by tonight and check, but it slipped my mind. So it would be redundant, and I assume you don't want them two next to each other, so.
Okay, we're going to do.
We'll double-check and make sure that they are.
No on that.
Through the chair, they don't need no signs on a lot like this.
Industrial substance.
Okay.
Well, I think the intention was the sign would be on Davis, not.
Inside the legacy circle, yeah. Okay, yeah, we don't need that.
Right, an O and M plan, an operation maintenance plan, that was another comment.
Okay.
Identify the finish as compacted gravel. And the suggestion was made that there be some sort of a provision for replacement of the construction entrances when they become filled with any, you know, sediment that's deposited by the trucks. I assume that still applies even though we're going to have an asphalt entrance, so we'll add something to the operation and maintenance plan, or perhaps the plans saying just that.
Well, we're hoping that compacted gravel is not moving around, right? Too much, yes.
Rainy day.
Yes.
And front traffic, fill those voids up and everything.
Okay.
It happens.
We'll add a note that the embankments at the perimeter will be stabilized with loam and seed.
Mm-hmm.
And the next note is that tree clearing is shown extending out of the property to the south. So that is the, pretty much, the existing tree line. We did do, there was some activity on the site, and as a result of that, you know, the owner was made aware of the need for these certain permits. So what we did is we did a survey to capture the conditions as they exist now.
That's true.
That's right.
That's right.
Yeah. And I also would note that that southerly of butter is effectively the applicant. So I don't think it's a problem. In fact, I know it's not a problem.
But it's already cleared though, right?
Pretty much.
You've picked up the existing, okay. All right, all right, that's a.
So the comment number nine, a recommendation that there be a berm along the north and west perimeter to assure that runoff is contained on site and to avoid sediment-laden runoff from entering the town streets. So it was our intention, and we did try to show a little bit of a berm right in this area. It's only about two feet high, but I think that's all it needs to be. The remainder of the site is pretty, or the remainder of the perimeter of the site is pretty much graded toward the site, so we did consider that, and I think we've captured, you know, what you're interested in. If you want to suggest something different or more, I'd be willing to, you know, consider it, but I think we have it.
That's mainly just fail-safe. I see a lot of the site is drained imminently, so it's not going to, just anywhere that the possibility existed during the storm, the water can end up in the right of way.
Okay. And let's see. Recommended that the right-of-way between the property and the edge of pavement be loamed and seeded. So the reference is to this strip, which runs from the edge of pavement of Legacy Circle to the right-of-way, correct? So a couple things about that. We could do that, and if the board's going to require it, it will, it's not, we will, it's not a lot of, you know, loaming and seeding. However, as you know, this is a project that was started, it's not the kind of project where, you know, a residential developer is going to go through as quickly as they can and build all the houses. It's going to take time for this to be built out. When it's ultimately built out, the subdivision plans show a sidewalk along this, within this strip. There's a grass strip, a sidewalk, and then another grass strip. In addition, the grading is such that it should grade, you know, toward the site. So I think the client's concern is, you know, what advantage there really is to loaming and seeding that. You know, it's a 10-foot, I think it's a 17-foot strip. We'll do it if the board requires it, but I'm not 100% confident that it's going to
Stay like grassy.
Add a lot of stability.
Stay grassy.
The beautification.
My, yeah, the beautification.
If I may, it's just the, the site is going to be gravelled, and it looks like Wild West might want something, I thought, along the right-of-way. Particularly because the right-of-ways, they're not the responsibility to maintain. I would think something to stabilize that section of right.
I would more be inclined to see a landscaping plan with something curling around, that there's a view of Davis and versus in the right-of-way at this moment.
And that's kind of the client's concern, and by the way, technically, it is our responsibility to maintain, we still own it, but that could change, you know, and I acknowledge that.
Tomorrow.
So, yeah, I think the concern is that we're going to put loam and seeding in effectively what's a construction site, and, you know, and what ultimately is going to end up being dug up to install a sidewalk someday anyway. So in any event. What's the verdict on that, you're saying?
Board?
If you wanted to see it.
In lieu of planting, doing loam and seed between the portions of the right-of-way and the property line on legacy at this moment, because your requirement is to loam and seed and sidewalk, correct, on the definitive?
Yes, and they're bound by, of course, the definitive subdivision approval and those plans to do that at such time as, you know, they want the road to be completed and accepted and all of that. But again, if the board's going to require it, they'll require it.
Is it gravel right now, right to the edge of the road? How is it when it rains? I haven't been up there, so I can answer.
I'm sure it's sand. I don't think, nothing moves around over there.
No.
Yeah. So most of the land that abuts Legacy Circle is graded not towards Legacy Circle. So a lot of the runoff, like on the site just up the road, there's depression, and this runoff is captured there. Up on lot six, I think it is, where there's ongoing processing, there was a whole elaborate plan to have a series of sedimentation basins. Whatever does end up in Legacy Circle is controlled, the catch basins have, I think, those, the netting on them, and the sediment basins are functioning. So to answer your question, what's going on, it's working pretty well.
Let me, to the chair, let me throw this up there. I mean, right now, lot, these two lots are going to be the first two lots really with anything going on up there. If further lots start to become developed in that area for aesthetics purposes, maybe, then maybe say, hey, why don't you come back, why don't you put some grass along the road and stuff, we have other businesses moving in. Right now, where it's only maybe them and the gravel pit, I don't really see a real concern the way it is.
And they wouldn't be released unless that sidewalk and the grass.
Right.
Out of their covenant, or whatever they did, covenant, maybe, no builds.
But if other businesses start to come in and develop the lots around them, and they go and plant grass and make the place look good, and then you look next door and you got a gravel pit right to the front of the road, kind of is discouraging. So maybe some verbiage in there, if other lots start to become developed, then in that easement area, then at least seed it.
Through the chair, doesn't the actual development have some kind of landscaping plan? Right, so they need to do it anyway in order to.
But we've got people, we've got people using the lots without.
Right.
Deeding them out, so that's a way around the requirements of that definitive subdivision plan. What I was proposing is on property. What I was proposing is on property, you know, the portion that you can see from Davis Street into the project more so than in the project because it is an active, improving site and a lot of stuff moving around.
I just have one other question about lighting. Is there no requirement from an insurance perspective or liability perspective to have lighting on this site at all?
Well, we don't weigh in on that. But it would be safety.
Yeah.
We could weigh in on safety, security.
I mean, if they're six to eight feet high, what if? Would the town have any issue with the safety concerns of a commercial?
Should be no trespass on private property.
Yeah. They don't operate during the dark. I don't think they want to operate when it's dark, probably for that reason. Probably not real safe. So if they're not operating other than during daylight, you know, they wouldn't provide. They wouldn't need lighting. And you made a reference to the six to eight-foot-high stack. When I said they were stacked six to eight feet high, it's not like it's something that's capable of toppling. So these mats are probably as long as, you know, from here to that wall and maybe eight feet that way. They're very rectangular and stable. So it's not like something that's susceptible to falling over if that was your concern.
Yeah. And I just, I didn't know the answer to the question in terms of a commercial operation or even an insurance perspective for, you know, for the owner, that they wouldn't require some kind of lighting.
It's probably the owner's risk. And I don't know of any such requirement. So.
And through the chair. For the longest time, they were stacking pile of them up at Jim Pines, up in the back of the pit. They're just, all they do is stack them. It's daylight stuff. I mean, back at Jim's pit, there's no lights.
Right.
And I mean, they had a mountain of them when they were putting all the new high-power tension lines because they used the mats for going off-road. So I mean, it's a situation where on this particular construction stuff, I hardly don't see them loading trucks at 3:00 in the morning for these mats, you know?
Yeah.
To load them the day before. Usually they drop the trailers. They come into the morning and hook up and go.
Do we?
A lot of times.
Through the chair. Do we address the hours of operation?
We can. Just want to get to the letter.
If you keep going on what you're doing, I just want it later when we get there.
We have two more left in this letter.
Go ahead.
Oh, I already, I'm already done with the letter. Yeah. Not be identified as proposed and put the firm app on there.
Yeah. We'll remove the reference to propose. And the site is not in the plan. So we'll put that note on there as well.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. Do we want to? Do we want to do? Okay. All right.
Well.
It's daylight hours, right?
I have an opinion, but daylight hours is also 4:58 in the middle of the summer, 5:00 in the morning. So I don't think. You know, I'd like to see maximum of like 7:00 a.m., which is pretty much construction hours, to 7:00 p.m. That based on, but not to exceed the daylight hours because it would be unsafe on the site. So if it's 5:00 in the afternoon in the winter, you know, and it's dark, you shouldn't be operating if you have no lighting. Because I think if you want to put lighting, it may change things. But I'm saying, just personal opinion, 7 to 7. Give us some latitude. Meet me out there. It's daylight, but not before 7:00.
Yeah. If you're asking if that's acceptable, I.
Something like that.
I think it is.
It's just a thought. I threw it out.
Sure. All right. Anything else, Board?
Sounds good.
Mr. Benoit?
No, just public comment.
Okay. Anyone in the audience, questions or concerns regarding this hearing? Name and address, please, sir?
Jeremy Flansburgh, 63 Monroe Street and 73 Davis Street. I live on, across north of, what is it? Legacy, Grand Tech. And I live on the other side of the dirt road. I own the property there. My main concern is, first off, I got this certified mail and it says 100 Davis Street. This is kind of a little deceiving because this map shows lot 1, lot 2, and this says Pasol 91011111. I think this probably should have its own address. I mean, from an emergency perspective, I mean, if something happens, where do the cops go? There's three buildings in Grand Tech. Or do they come to? Where is 100? That's my first concern. And if I knew it was on this side of it, I probably wouldn't have been here today. I do agree that we should have some sort of shrubs. If we're going to be, if he's going to be a good neighbor, because he's my neighbor now, we should have some sort of shrubbery to block this big pile of basically Lincoln Logs next to a porta potty. And I don't know where he's going to store his Bobcat. Is the Bobcat going to be stored on the site? I think that should be kind of addressed. His hours of operation, right now, they're currently outback with the mining operation. And of course, back to the word mining, he keeps saying mining, and this says clearing and grading, not mining. But the mining operation, they work Saturdays. Sometimes they work Sundays. They work every holiday. They work Patriots Day. I think they even work Labor Day. And the noise is unbelievable. The ram-hauling, the blasting. This is not what I intended to get into when I built my house at 63 Monroe Street. This is the amount of noise that's going on. Every time they blast, I'm nervous about going to my sink and opening the faucet to see if the water comes up ground because that's how bad my house shakes. The dust control? I mean, I haven't seen any proposals. Is it going to have a water truck there to hose this down? And the traffic signage? My mom has also pointed out that there was temporary traffic signage of trucks going in and out, but they disappeared. So I don't know if there's any more. If they're still there or not.
No, they're not.
Then my mom will attest to that. But. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Benoit, could you?
I'm Beverly Flansburgh. In regards to that signage, when the original project started, when they were clearing the land and doing all their beginning stuff, there were temporary signs put up, trucks entering and exiting. Eventually, those signs were taken away. We were promised signage in the area, and there's been nonsense.
Okay. We're going to check into that. Mr. Benoit, if you could. It is still a requirement for the work that's being done on the site. So we'll get you some signage up. One moment, please. Anyone else in the audience have questions or concerns regarding this hearing? Okay. Mr. Flansburgh, did you, another follow-up question or comment?
Will there be any blasting fall through this? And if so, will anybody? I mean, McIntyre now, there's been calling my mom, but he's not calling me. So I don't know when blasting's going on. Because we mentioned it, I think, on one of the last meetings. And I don't know if he calls it mining, but his application calls it clearing and grading. So I don't know if he has any intent on doing any blasting on this proposal on the board yet.
So the short answer is no. We've done test pits to confirm that there's no ledge. So we do not expect to do any blasting for that reason. And because the nature of our earthwork is not nearly as deep as what's going on on lot 6. This is shaping the site, you know, a couple of feet here and there, more or less, not going down, you know, as deep as they are there. And just very quickly, the other points. Lot 2 and lot, lot 1 and lot 2 don't yet have a street address assigned by the assessor. When they do, we'll certainly refer to it as whatever it's going to be, Legacy Circle. The shrubbery, I think the board has adequately addressed that. Hours of operation, I think we talked about and we're amenable to what you've suggested. I do not anticipate that this tenant will be working on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays or on the off chance that they are. If somebody needs some matting on a holiday or a weekend, you know, it's a truck that comes in and gets loaded and leaves. It's not a day's worth of excavation and the like. And as far as the signs go, I don't know if there were references to temporary signs that were there when the subdivision road was being constructed or to the signs that I referred to that were required for the earth removal special permit for lot 6. But the latter, those trucks entering signs for lot 6, are intended to be permanent. There's no question about that. So I too will check to see that they.
Perfect. And then the length of the operation, the earth removal portion? How long are they estimating?
Mr. Bangma today. Dale Bangma of Quarry Excavating is going to complete the earthwork. And he estimated that it would take no more than a month to finish what he needs to do to construct what's shown on the plans.
And then the earth removal, the 8,000 cubic feet removal? I know it's by demand, but is there an estimate on the operation, the earth removal portion of it?
Well, I mean, doing the grading is the earth removal.
Okay.
It's the same answer. It's a month.
Okay.
It's a conservative estimate, the 8,000. You know, frankly, I took the average grade of the site before any work was done, not what's shown there, but before the work was, any work was done. And the average grade of the site, as shown on the plans, and came up with about 8,000 yards. That's probably pretty conservative. It's still not that much as earth removal operations go.
Right.
It's about a month to finish it up.
Yeah. That puts things in perspective, I think, for any disruptive activity potential.
Oh, I see. So yeah, the concern is expressed about construction and noise and the like. Again, I don't think they're going to do this construction on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays. And your point is well taken. It's a month. It's not the ongoing operation that is going on on lot 6.
Okay.
I have one question. Once the place is given an address, doesn't that have to be posted on the property someplace for?
So I would just touch base. I think also Building Department, I thought, typically gave the addresses. So I would actually. And then we can modify the plan once it's. So I think you request the address, and then that goes to fire and police so we can put those on the plans.
So that they know it didn't have.
Yeah. And then it has to be posted. Yeah.
Posted on the property so they know where you're at.
Sure.
So it'd be a sign you'd need with a number and stuff.
Sure.
Madam Chair, the address used in the legal ad are the addresses for the Peter Michael Business Park and plus the parcels that were divided thereof. So we just use what we have current.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, until it's requested. Yeah. Okay. Board, anything else? No, no. Okay. Do you think that you'll be ready for?
Yes. Three weeks.
Tomorrow. We have a special meeting tomorrow. Yes, September 14th. Okay. Let me just see if we have anything else. Okay. Board, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing for 100 Davis Street to Thursday, September 14th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Swick, I mean, Mr. Schultsberg, second by Mr. Preston. All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Board.
Appreciate it. Me too.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you. Thanks for staying late.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Next item.
Where's my agenda?
Be schedule adjustments for FY '24.
Continue discussion.
Okay. I don't have that copy. Okay.
I don't know if I'm the only one who has it. I hope not. Okay. Madam Chair, as we discussed at the start of previous meeting, the issue we have is the checks bouncing back and forth between applicants, the TNG, et cetera. We take in a general $200 check. Then we go back to the applicant. When the ad is finalized by the telegram, we hand a check back to them and ask them for a new one. And sometimes we don't get it. So we have an issue there. It is very uncommon between communities to do that. Most of them just ask for a flat rate. And the opinion of myself and our principal clerk, Jen Kutcher, who's fantastic at this stuff, she would recommend that we have a $200 flat advertising fee. In addition to that, we also have issues with our mailing fees. Currently, the Douglas Planning Board is eating all mailing costs, like dot the bottom. And we send certified letters out.
But we want to clarify that it's, there is an application fee that we don't break it down exactly. So I think that was the thought process in the past 25 years.
Right.
That it's covered by the application fee.
Application fees. Right. Right. The question is, is do, as certified mail continues to go up and as we're using certified mail, it's almost at about $9 per, times two because you're sending a letter for the hearing and then a notice of decision. So one butter is costing us $18. Rounded number.
Yeah.
So a project with 40 of butters, you do the math. So that's going to eat into your application fee quite quickly. So that's going to eat into your application fee quite quickly. So what we're hoping for, and think what we're going to get, is a uniform, at least, consensus from the zoning board is looking to adopt the $200 fee and set our mailing fees at the current USPS rate for certified letters. I just want to open it to the board again for a discussion, so we can try to pin this down and update our fee schedule accordingly.
Okay, Board, what do we think?
I'll go for the $200, then do a flat. I don't have a problem with it. I understand.
That's reasonable.
On the mailings, I don't know how you want to go about that.
If you guys need more time to think about that, I'm all about it. We really just want to catch that $200 ad fee to start.
That way they're not handling monies back and forth, double handling, not getting one shot, one deal, done and over.
The anticipated applications coming in are going to have a large number of letters.
But don't we have, some of the applications have a butter fee, right, times the number of the butters? So why don't we just stick with that?
I would, I would love to do that.
Okay.
We.
Doesn't say it in here.
Yeah, what's the schedule?
We don't have those. I would love to propose that.
I thought, I thought at least one of them.
Or $70 a letter. Nine, how much is a letter?
It's gone up twice since I've been here.
Yeah.
Is it really? So it should be $10, you say, for a butter.
We're at, I think we're at $8.33 per.
Per.
So this.
That's what I'm trying to find.
Yeah, so the accessory apartment.
That one has it, right?
Is $7.33 per butter.
And that was as of 2021.
Right. So we need to just do per a butter mailing cost. I think we do that, and we come up with a number that, now, is it required that we send them the decision?
Yes.
Okay.
To all the butters?
Yes.
So call it $15 per butter.
I think it was 18. Wasn't it 18?
Yeah, we're at eight and a half.
Are we allowed, though, to charge more than what it costs?
Administrative fee to stuff the envelopes?
I'm just checking.
Which some towns require the applicant to do it, so.
So you're saying our cost is like 17, 18?
Yeah, 18.
All 20? Except that they have 40 a butters.
So the thing they're allowed to do, though, is change all of it for the apartment and for everything else, making sure that everybody's the same.
Yeah, the fee is on here already, the mailing fee.
And that can be changed without town meeting?
Right.
Yes, that's the plan.
So then the game plan would be to make it $20 across the board?
Per butter.
Per butter.
For mailing, mailing fees.
Call that round trip.
Round trip, that's right.
I was hoping, Madam Chair, it's just for us to have a discussion, see where we're at.
You didn't expect this?
I could be wrong about this, but I think we need an actual public hearing to formalize our fee schedule modification. I'm not totally sure about that, but I want to make sure. But the advertising fee, I'm, I want to get some sort of consensus on us before we move forward. I do, I would have time, between this meeting and next, to hold a public hearing if we need to.
I'm not sure, because this is regulations.
Yeah, I know we do it for subdivision regs.
Called regulations.
Yeah, and we do it for subdivision regs, that's why I wasn't sure.
Put it this way.
Oh, well, preceded by a public hearing.
There we go.
Amendments shall be preceded by a public hearing.
So I just wanted to see if we could, because if this board was like, no, we're not changing anything, I'd rather have the discussion now before I put a public hearing in front of it.
No, let's, let's change it.
I'd say do it, I mean, ship a box in UPS and see what it costs you today, it's great.
No, we have to.
And we can't be losing money on the fee structure. Not that, and Ernie's going to say, well, we don't want to be charging everybody too much. But unfortunately, in today's world, that's, can't hide from it.
So I think.
Ultimately, the taxpayers of Douglas sometimes pay for our mailing.
And I don't know how many years it's been since we've really done anything.
20-ish.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So I think the consensus is, yes, we want to change advertising, and we want to change the rate on all of the applications to an appropriate rate. Is break, actually break even rate, as close as possible.
Madam Chair, could we perhaps have a motion to schedule a public hearing to adjust our fee schedule?
You said it, I'll make it.
Also moved.
Mr. Swick made the motion. Second by Mr. Schultsberg, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's do, can we just do one more thing?
It's a lightning round. Sure, I have an update for Oak Street.
Yes.
Short update, I, oh, how do I, somewhere it says, is there something you'd like to say?
I didn't know the 20 of them. I'm going to accuse myself of.
Mr. Swick. Oh, okay, never mind, he can't hear either. I was going to sign this stuff.
Okay, so update on Oak Street, the solar project, as many of you already know, we've experienced some stormwater runoff issues that were affecting some private citizens. Since then, the solar company has implemented a series of basins and modifications to the site that I was able to witness last Friday when we got a lot of rain. Actually, we even had a tornado warning at one point. And I was out there in the heart of it, watching how their adjustments functioned. They also sent somebody out there to monitor the situation also, and it was functioning very well. Their engineers have provided us with a memo that's here today. And also, our consultant did have a chance to weigh in on it also, and believed the system was functioning accordingly. He recommends that we implement those changes permanently onto the planning moving forward. However, they like to consider it a temporary basin and keep it in place as they move forward to the next phases of the project. So in speaking with Mr. Fraser, our building commissioner, and the vice president of Blue Wave, Jason Smith, on Wednesday, he gave him a verbal authorization to proceed with Phase 2 and Phase 3. Phase 2 is a large basin above the Whiteland area that's kind of centralized on the site. That could prevent any other, you know, future seepage or anything like that. And Phase 3 is in a northern corner, call it the upper left corner when you look at the plants. There was a Sutton resident that had some concerns about the project as well, but she wants them to continue so they can construct the basins and prevent some of the issues. So we thought it was necessary to open up both Phase 2 and Phase 3 so we can address both issues concurrently, so one's not waiting for the other. Mr. Fraser is going to issue a letter to that extent, and I just wanted to update the board on the progress of this. It's important that we stay on top of it and continue to monitor the situation.
Okay, great.
You do have a butter who's here who may have comments, if you wish.
Very short comment, yes?
60 Oak Street. Regarding Phase 3, has there been reviewed by the engineer who was working for the town in this project?
Okay, good question. So the original engineer who reviewed the project is a company called Pear Corporation, okay? The consultant that we have reviewing the ongoing efforts of the developer is a different company. It's Haley Ward, also formerly known Leonard Engineering. There are folks that we use regularly, Cory Broder and Duck Bush. Question being whether they have reviewed it in advance to make sure it's sound. I'm not entirely sure of that, but I'd be happy to make sure that they do. Perhaps even provide some sort of report in advance to make sure they think it's functioning properly, if that's the pleasure of the Board.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And the reason I ask is because it's a test run. That's going on to my property and fields, and as it is, we're getting a lot of drainage on the other side of the road that runs down and into the road. So, you know, people on the street, as you said, have had a lot of problems, and I just don't want to see it happen again. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, Board, any other comments? No?
I do have one last item, just a quick one. Has there been any discussion, especially prior to coming on, regarding a master plan? I think the last master plan was approved over 20 years ago. And I think we're supposed to sort of review it on occasion, I think every 10 or 15 years or so. So I just wanted to bring that up to see if that's something the Board wanted to entertain, kind of looking at. I could even put together some information for the Board. Kind of give you an update of where it is and maybe what we should do.
Yeah, sure, that would be great. Were you on the last one?
I was.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Years ago.
Yeah. Shirley was on there, too.
Shirley was on everything, so.
Yeah, that would be great, yes.
I'd love to weigh in on that. I actually introduced this idea at a staff meeting not too long ago, while all of our department heads were in the meeting, and said, look, it's about that time. We're going to get started on master plan soon. And then I got a resignation letter from a conservation agent. I've been handling his duties in the interim, so to speak. So I haven't been able to move on to the master plan until we fill a position, so I can open up our long-term planning efforts. But I'm all about that, and I'll support that all day long. I would definitely recommend that this board consider consultant services for a variety of the chapters in the master plan. Compiling those efforts, going out for RFP, excuse me, RFQ, is something we should strongly consider. I don't think an in-house master plan would be wise for this town.
Would CMRPC be a good source to start maybe on the structure of it, like the big picture?
I think so.
For the layout, maybe we can use some of our hours?
Yes. I think they'd be very helpful with the maps in the zoning chapters. But I'd love to go out for consultant services in economic development, transportation, and housing, for certain.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'd be curious to see what CMRPC would offer us and for how many hours.
I think they would bid on it, just like any other private company.
Okay, but don't we pay for like a certain amount of hours that we have to use? Yeah.
Yep, yeah, we've got a few hours that we can use for technical services. In Auburn, when we did this, we had consultant services for others, but we used some of those LPA hours for the map making.
Okay.
So that was really helpful. Matt Ferenz is a great GIS coordinator over there, so.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that sounds like a plan, a master plan. Okay, anything else, Board? Did we get a chance to review the meeting minutes? Were those approved? We have May 25th, June 22nd, July 20th. Did you guys approve any of it? No.
You're going to do those, or you're going to pass them on this?
Have you reviewed them, Mike? Mr. Greco?
I have.
Okay.
If you want to do them tonight.
Yeah, sure.
Because I don't know, all right. If you got, you should pull out your.
Got it.
Copy of the May 25th thing.
Okay.
On the first page, item number 3, Perry Street Extension, if you can find that. Anyway, in that paragraph, the last, next to the last line, it mentions Highway 4.
B4.
What's Highway 4?
B4.
Pardon?
B4, get the, B-E-F-O-R-E. Get the information, before.
Before, you're right, good catch, Mike.
From police, fire, no, and highway.
Before.
Period.
Period.
Police, fire, what?
Oh, maybe.
Oh, and highway, and, not in.
Should be and highway.
Yeah.
It must have been my accent.
And Highway 4?
No, just highway.
And highway. This would be a subtle.
It's like a run-on sentence.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be made? Oh, and no capital on what, comma? It's a continuing sentence.
Oh, there you go.
The top line, Ernie Marks.
That's true, lowercase, lowercase.
All Ernie's, yeah, Marks.
Got a comma.
Oh, yeah.
It should be all rewritten.
Police, fire, and highway.
Yeah, it needs to be modified somehow.
Okay. Mr. Greco, I'm going to hit that sentence for you. Therefore, there would have to get that information from police, fire, and highway for what improvement should be made? That's how that should read. Okay. Okay.
So what do we do? Should we approve these with the modifications mentioned? Something like that?
As amended.
As amended?
Yeah.
Number four, number four has a thing.
Make a motion, I'll make a motion then.
Well, number four, just, the project consists of demolishing an existing building and garage into a new structure, number four, you said?
Where in four?
Whatever. Built a new one, not build one new structure.
There was discussion back and forth, not it. And then some periods are missing. Town council should be capitalized.
Where did we go?
Raise the car.
Board of selection.
Raise the car and liquor store.
Well, there's somebody filling in on these, by the way.
Board of selection should be capitalized.
Okay. This one has several.
Did you see that one?
I see the raise the car one.
Yeah.
That's, that I see. I don't know, even know what to put there, like, what is the?
Somebody needs to review this thing, it's all, why don't we do that?
Which one, which one did you look at? What, raise the car one?
Item number four, last, large paragraph, first line.
Mr. Callahan.
715.
So it's Mr. Callahan, C-A-L-L, A-H.
Would like to raise the car. Representative applicant, the owner, would like to raise the car in the liquor store.
I would happily go back over this entire minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
I think somebody was filling in, wasn't there someone?
Well, it's probably raise the liquor store, but it's R-A-Z-E-D.
I'll happily amend these, the May 25th, we could table those.
Okay, let's, let's table.
What's the thing about liquor store? Read it, it doesn't make sense.
Mike, we're going to table those ones for now.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
To adjourn.
Ooh, I had one more comment, I apologize. Our last meeting, unfortunately, I'm sorry, our July 20th meeting was unfortunately, the recording of that meeting did not, did not work, okay? It was not recorded, and we found out after the fact. So this is a draft of minutes strictly from memory by me.
Oh.
Okay.
Which day was this?
This is the Thursday, July 20th meeting, okay? I did it as well as I could. All I ask is that if you were here, to please review those and try to draw from whatever memory pool you got, and see if I missed anything.
So I can't look back on the YouTube video?
I don't think it exists, I could be wrong. So it was unfortunate, it happened, it is what it is. So the minutes, I think the minutes accurately reflect my notes and the occurrences that took place, but I don't have time signatures, I don't have the right motions and who made the seconds, so I kind of just put names in there. So if you guys, if you guys happen to remember who those were, that's why it happened, I could certainly use your help with this set of minutes.
Good effort.
Thank you.
You know what, Matt, looks like you did a fine job.
Fine job, you have a memory and a half.